I would like to call the special meeting of March 18th, 2021 to order. And first on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We, as far as approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none, the agenda is approved by consensus. Item three, 3.1, Learning Plan Updates, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. As you know, last week at our board meeting, we did approve a plan to increase our in-person learning for the district and move forward with a start date of that from March the 22nd. Tonight is a meeting where we want to address some outstanding questions. We've taken some frequently asked questions throughout the week from our administrators and our parents, and also just give you some updates on where we left off from last week. Tonight is a way to let you know, as a board, how prepared we are for Monday, the 22nd, and how much confidence we have in bringing our children back for this new plan. So, as you know, the largest change to our plan from where we've been since March 1st is that we are increasing in-person schedules, beginning on March the 22nd, at all of our K-12 schools. A remote learning option remains in place for all our families who still choose that option for their child or their children. Some of the things that have changed for us over the course of responding to COVID in our schools is that while we're increasing our in-person schedules, the state of Michigan has now published a new document, the State of Michigan Guidelines for Operating Schools Safely, that was published in December of 2020. And that guidance is intended to update a previously distributed document by the state of Michigan, which was the My Safe Schools roadmap. We're no longer following those. We were given that directive from the state, including updates from Governor Whitmer. And so now, all of the new rules that we're following can be found in this new guidance document that we received. Our biggest change would be to the social distancing that's now recommended. It's now at a minimum of three feet or six feet if still possible. Of course, we want our students outdoor more times than indoor. So, things that we can do during recess, lunches, maybe some of the specials classes, even as the weather turns and our classes could go outside for learning. We are going to encourage that whenever possible. We also know that in some very unique spaces, the three feet will be pretty close. We're still going to try to hit that minimum of three feet, and we're going to talk to you tonight about some other strategies that we've put in place to make sure that that can happen. I think one of the key points to remember is that we're not only social distancing as much as possible, we're also layering the other mitigation strategies in our schools. Those will be dust shields, which we're using to separate spaces. And tonight, Ms. Kathy Abell is going to give us an update on that and where we are. We also are following universal guidelines and the correct use of masks by all of our staff and students. So, that has not changed. That's still a requirement in all of our spaces. Whether you've been vaccinated or not, we're still requiring the use of masks by all of our staff and all of our students. Of course, we encourage frequent hand washing at the public bathrooms in our schools or in the individual classrooms where they have sinks and soap. Our sanitizing stations are still in every classroom. We saw those, and we've visited schools again this week to look at all of these things in place. We are still cleaning and sanitizing hard surfaces and high-touch areas. I know we've had some folks call us with, you know, articles they've read that say you don't need to do that anymore. We're still going to continue with that. We have not lessened our cleaning protocols at all. We are following contact tracing protocols given to us by the Oakland County Health Department. Mr. Walensky is going to update us on those this evening. And we continue to use our Clear2Go app for all staff, students, and visitors. But visitors are very, very limited in our schools. We want to be able to control who's in our building, know who's in our building. But if we do have a visitor, we definitely will have them use our Clear2Go app.
And I wanted to update you on some of the protocols that we are putting in place this week as we are expecting students to return on Monday. Additional dust shields have been ordered for all buildings and have been arriving over the last few days. Our last shipments will arrive tomorrow. They will all be in the classrooms for instruction on Monday. We have ordered over 3,000 dust shields. Each of our buildings is unique and worked very closely with each principal for their needs for their individual buildings. ABM has, we have approved an enhanced cleaning service last fall with ABM. We contracted the additional service to provide additional touch point cleanings throughout the buildings. These enhanced cleaners have additional training. And for the children and staff that have been in the buildings for the last two weeks, they have seen them, their uniforms are a little bit different. And I have witnessed some of the cleaning that they're doing. But they're providing a very good service for us. We have some additional furniture that's been moved into and around some buildings. Movers have been distributing that in just a couple of the buildings. It's not all nine of them. There is unique furniture in some of those buildings. We had furniture from Oakland Elementary prior to the new furniture they received this year. So, we were able to use some of that furniture. And for those of you that know, we moved out some of the furniture at Royal Oak Middle School, expecting the hybrid model. And now that we're having all the children back, we have moved that back in. We brought in the additional custodial staff this coming weekend to make sure things are clean and ready for all students on Monday morning. Finally, I'd like to thank all the custodians and maintenance staff for all their hard work. They have worked tirelessly to make sure that all of these things have been put in place for students to return on Monday. Do you have any questions about any of those items? Okay, I believe the next topic is Mr. Walensky.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Abell. I'll talk briefly about operations. What goes without saying, that all staff and all students are required to screen daily for COVID symptoms. We have been doing that for a while now. And exposure, I want to make that clear, not just symptoms, but exposure. And as you all know, and I keep saying, we're using the Clear2Go app for that purpose. I think people are getting used to the Clear2Go app. Sometimes people forget, sometimes people say yes when they mean no. So, we have to go in and clear that. But if someone says yes and they have symptoms, they're not able to come to school until we clear that. As the number of students is going to double on a given day, come Monday, it's going to become increasingly important that people self-screen truthfully every day and be very vigilant about that. As you all know, people can be exposed to the virus and not know. And people can be carriers of the virus and not know. And that's why we have personal protection equipment. We have all the procedures we do because we may not know. But if we have reason to know, somebody might have this virus, they have symptoms, or they've been exposed to somebody, we do not want them at school. And if we can do those things well, then we can keep a safe environment. Collaboration with Oakland County Health Department has been really good and really helpful. I've been in education 30 years, and I've worked with legal counsel and law enforcement and social service agencies. But this is the first time I've really worked with health officials. And I want to give credit again to Sarah McGahey, the nurse assigned to us from the Oakland County Health Department, just been so helpful in a phone call away when we have questions about direct contacts or procedural things. Sarah also helped us develop our mitigation plan, which we had to submit to the Oakland County Health Department in January. And that had to meet all CDC guidelines. And that was approved back in January. She met with building principals, walked through schools, checked classrooms, et cetera, and helped us develop all of our procedures. When we do have a positive case, we're required to report that immediately to the Oakland County Health Department. We do have a spreadsheet, and it's, you know, auto fills and tells, we tell who the infected person is and who the direct contacts are. And then it tells us, you know, the quarantine dates. Those people get contacts, they receive a contact from the Oakland County Health Department. And it's pretty user-friendly. We also put out letters of public notification, and then obviously follow up with custodial staff to clean the areas where that infected person was. And then, of course, you know, the requirements for quarantine vary. If it was someone who's a direct contact, someone who has been infected by the COVID virus, or someone who's showing symptoms, and we have to monitor for all of those things as well. Do you have any questions for me on this part?
Mr. Walensky, I just want to clarify, we've had some questions. Of course, our families have students in multiple schools, and we always notify the full school when we have positive cases, either staff or students. But if a family has more than one child in our school system and they're in different places, will they be given clear direction on maybe quarantining one of their children as a close contact? But then, the whole family would not have to quarantine unless, of course, there are symptoms. But is that, that's all true, correct, or will?
Yes, that is true. If you're a direct contact, you have to quarantine. But that direct contact may come into contact with people that are not required to quarantine unless that person becomes positive themselves. So, contact with a contact does not require quarantine at this time.
I also want to point out that the protocols that we're following are very strict. As you've said, that we have tools that we must use with the Oakland County Health Department, and that does not vary by school. All of our schools follow the same plans for reporting, and that's overseen by your office as well.
Yes, that is correct. It is consistent among all of our school buildings. There are six elementaries, Churchill Community High School, Royal Oak High School, and the middle school, and our early childhood center.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walensky?
Yes, Ms. Alexander.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. I was wondering, you mentioned that the Oakland County Health Department does the contact tracing and those types of things. Do Royal Oak schools not do contact tracing? Or is it that Royal Oak Schools does the contact tracing and provides those names to the Health Department?
Yeah, we provide the names in the spreadsheet to the Oakland County Health Department. And then they help us determine whether or not someone really was a direct contact or not. You know, in some cases, we think they are. But then, in speaking to the nurse, they never really came within six feet or for 15 minutes, and we determined that they're not a direct contact. But they help us determine that.
Okay.
And we err on the side of caution. If someone's close, we consider them a direct contact.
Yeah, so I guess my next question is, since most of, if not all of, the classrooms are likely to be somewhere in the three to six feet of spacing with more students returning, what will happen in terms of if there's a positive case in a classroom where there was that less than six feet? Will the entire class be required to quarantine? Or will we still be looking at just the kind of outreach from that particular student?
We would consult with Oakland County Health Department. But I believe just the students within close proximity. You know, it wouldn't be like a chain that everyone in the room is there for a direct contact. We'd have to make that determination. But not necessarily with the whole room have to quarantine.
Okay. And my last question, I noticed that you talked about the letter of approval that the Oakland County Health Department gave us in January. With the change and the increased student numbers and things like that, is that something that needs to be resubmitted? Or what is the frequency that that letter of approval is reviewed by Oakland County?
I've not been told that we've had to resubmit that letter. But that is a question I just, actually, I believe I sent that email yesterday to find out if we need to update that mitigation plan.
Okay, thank you.
So, I can add something to that, too, Ms. Walensky. Oakland County Health Division did look at our plans in place, regardless of the number of students that would be there. So, it would be our standard protocols that we were following. What does our isolation room or illness room look like at every school? Do we have one? Do we have signage? What do our cleaning protocols look like? What about our notification systems? Are we following all of the rules that they've set forth? And then they scored us in each one of those categories. But I also asked the same question about whether or not our plan needed to be updated in order to be re-approved. And to my knowledge, it does not, so long as we didn't change any of our plans ourselves. So, if we changed our plan, that could be possible. But we have not. All of the safety plans we put in place that were approved back in January are still in place.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, no problem.
I see Ms. Van Heidsma has a question.
Yeah, Ms. Alexander beat me to a couple of questions. But if you could just elaborate a little bit further on the quarantine requirements, because I know that has changed over time. And I'd like to know specifically what the quarantine requirements are for staff and the quarantine for students. And yeah, if you could elaborate that and a little bit more on the family. I'm trying to think in terms of if a family member tests positive, is in one building, and then a student is in another building, how that student is not also required to quarantine? I'm just trying to think in terms of household, unless I misunderstood.
It varies quite a bit. There's a lot of different scenarios. If a family member is positive, obviously, you reside with them. The student, the family members who are not currently positive, their quarantine actually begins when the positive family member's quarantine ends because they could have contracted the virus on the 10th day of quarantine. 10 days is the minimum for quarantine. But if it's a 10-day quarantine for, say, the father who lives in the household, the children, then their quarantine starts when his ends. It's a 10-day quarantine minimum. If it's for someone with symptoms, it's a 10-day quarantine or evidence of a negative COVID-19 test. Same thing for a positive, well, positive case, it's a minimum of 10 days from onset of symptoms. And then, for people who display symptoms, it's 10 days or a negative test and 24 hours after the test without fever-reducing medicine or symptoms improved. And again, we always call the Oakland County Health Department or call our nurse and ask for guidance and to make sure we're doing this correctly when cases arise.
Ms. Van Heidsma, I think on the question that I, or the situation that I posed, it was a question I had received about if my child was a close contact while at one of our schools, would our entire family then have to quarantine because of their close contact? And unless the member of the family is positive themselves or shows symptoms, the entire family would not have to then quarantine because they weren't the close contact. It's just the one student in the family. So, there's a big difference between a positive case in your own household or if you, as a whole family, were exposed to someone, let's say, on the weekend in your neighborhood or in your family. That's very different. And the good news is, is that we've worked out many of these protocols and have done it well throughout the time as our athletics have been underway and as some of our students have been back, actually, in the fall or with special education or in the last few weeks with everyone. So, our notification process is working. And I will say, Oakland County Health Division has been very helpful when we work through the intricacies of each of these cases.
I see Ms. Sykes has a question.
I just wondered if there was any information, maybe from the state of Michigan or anything, if any schools would be receiving the COVID test at all? For, would we ever have to administer any of those? Not the, not the no's ones, but I didn't know if schools would have to, any plans to do that?
You know, antigen testing was made available through the county. Not many school districts opted to do that once the vaccine became available for staff. It was antigen testing for staff members. Although I don't have exact numbers, but I believe most of our staff are actually vaccinated now. So, wouldn't be important to do the testing weekly.
Ms. Alexander, do you have another question? I do, thank you. I'm wondering if, right now, if we get notification, if there was a positive test in the building? Will it continue to be that way? Or will parents of a specific classroom be notified that the classroom was affected, even if they aren't, their child wasn't a direct contact?
No, we notify the whole school, but they only get notified if they're believed to be a direct contact.
Okay, and is, could you clarify, is the direct contact determination made based on seating chart? Or is it made, like, I guess I'm just curious, especially for the elementary school levels, where I know they're going to lunch and they're also going to the recess? I'm wondering how the contact tracing is being determined by Royal Oak staff?
Yeah, it would be proximity and length of time. So, it's quite possible the whole class would have to quarantine. I just want, don't want to say that would be automatic because it might not be. But we probably would start with every child in that classroom. And it's quite possible, over the course of the day, they would all be a direct contact. But not necessarily. It's proximity and length of time.
Does seating chart come into play for the middle school and high school levels where they're not having lunch and recess?
Yeah, that would help us determine their proximity, certainly. So, that would be important to follow daily seating charts and seating assignments.
So, it feels like a lot that the teachers are kind of being saddled with in terms of trying to remember who was by whom and so forth in the course of a given day. Are the, are there like tracking tools? Or are there ways that we're helping the teachers to be? I mean, obviously, we're not anticipating that anyone's going to, you know, test positive. But because testing positive generally comes a time period after, we have to kind of like trace back to when that happened, I'm just wondering if there's like a particular tracking method that staff are using?
Well, it's really, the infected person is interviewed essentially or contacted by the Oakland County Health Department. And they're asked, who did you have contact with? And then, we, like I said, we would err on the side of caution. If we believe that's possible, someone was a direct contact, then we would ask them to quarantine. So, you know, we certainly wouldn't put that pressure on the teacher to identify who did this child have direct contact with.
But I would think that it would be relatively important, though, for the teachers to weigh in, especially for the younger grades and the, you know, kids that might not be good historians or good, you know, kind of like factual retelling and things like that.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's quite possible that the teacher's going to be a direct contact as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Van Heidsma, did you have another question?
Yeah, I had two before, and I missed my other opportunity. So, when we, and this actually relates to more the spacing in the buildings, recognizing that we can't always be three feet. Did we use other rooms that may, I don't know that there's spare rooms to use, but did we actually kind of space out and maybe to allow like bigger spaces? You know, I mean, are we doing classes in the gyms or anything like that when it's non-lunchtime, just to kind of maybe create a bigger space?
To my knowledge, I believe we're just using the classroom spaces that we currently have. I don't know of classrooms that are being moved, for example, to the cafeteria or gymnasium.
I do know from our principals that they are trading classrooms. So, some of our spaces, which were small to begin with, knowing now the number of children that will be back in those spaces, if that room is not large enough, then they were swapping out spaces. And that's a building-by-building situation. Probably not as much in our elementary schools because we have somewhat of a standard sizing. But in some of our other schools, they're not a standard-sized classroom. And if the more kids they have, if they can't spread out, I do know of them swapping. So, as Ms. Abell has pointed out, too, we've made some changes to the furniture, the types of chairs and table setups that each group has, which makes it easier to use the partitions we've ordered, wear the masks, space the kids out as much as possible. And then, if we'd had to swap the space to begin with. So, it's kind of a layering plan and a situation-by-situation, case-by-case basis.
Oh, we did use larger spaces for lunch. So, K-5 students have been spread out into the gym as well as the cafeteria. We've ordered additional six-foot folding tables so that the kids are maintaining six feet when their mask is off and they're having lunch.
Are there any other questions on operations or facilities?
Ms. Alexander? Yeah, and Mary Beth, I don't know if you, if this would be the appropriate time for this question or not. So, you can just redirect if it's that. But I'm thinking, like, with the recent news of the District of Oxford that currently has 200 kids in quarantine. And I'm wondering if the district, if Royal Oak has a threshold or, you know, something that in their minds would trigger, when do we like kind of take a pause to get a handle on things like that?
Yes, that's where our consultants from the county help us out quite a bit. So, it may be that we have cases throughout the district, but they're spread out in different buildings, non-related, so they're not family members. That will make it a different scenario as opposed to a school. And hopefully, this does not happen to us, that a single school has a high number of cases. It will depend on the number of people in the building and then how many cases that we had. The good news is, is that up till now, we've had remote learning in place, and our students know how to be flexible and go back into those learning modes if we needed to. But this is where we would rely very heavily on the County Health Department to help us when we're making those decisions. I know that even throughout the winter, there were some private schools that were closing for a week at a time. And they assessed the situation in their school, and they took a pause for the week, as you said, and deep cleaned and gave kids a break. So, we would monitor that very closely. But to say that we have an exact number we're waiting for, I'll go with Mr. Walensky. We're going to err on the side of caution that if numbers begin to climb and we've had too many students exposed and quarantining, we would make that decision with the health professionals and then close that building down for a period of time. But hopefully, as I said, we don't have to do that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Van Heidsma?
Yeah, I had another question. So, I know that we have athletics continuing, so we have that happening within the building. At the elementary level, the middle school level, are there other events that are going to be occurring in the schools where we're going to have, you know, others in the building? And how is that going to be handled?
So, we had task forces that were put in place, and many of our staff members, our administrators and teachers, served on those committees in the past. The only thing that's being allowed right now after school would be our latchkey programs as well as athletics. And both of those programs are highly regulated and follow pretty strict rules for, much like we're doing in our classrooms. You asked about testing, someone asked about testing earlier. Our athletes were some of the first students to be tested before participation in their games or matches. And they followed the results of those tests. And in some cases, some of our students weren't allowed to participate by the results. So, we're watching those really closely. But I would say that clubs that might gather or using our classrooms after school for scouts or something else, we're just not starting that up right now. Having many students back, starting March 22nd, our numbers are increasing. I'm going to talk about that in just a few minutes. We don't need to add and complicate that by kids now staying after school if we can help it. So, we're not making decisions right now on clubs or other groups meeting after school. Once the school day's over, we'd prefer that the students go on home and we can get to work in the classrooms with our cleaning protocols. Does that answer your question? Okay. And this would probably be a good point to, place to interject about the big events that, of course, I know many of our families and students are thinking about, graduation, prom-like activities, send-offs at the eighth grade, the fifth grade level, all of that. I know our PTAs are very anxious also to honor our students and hold some events for families. We're looking at that with, actually, the state. I was on a call earlier with Governor Whitmer and a number of superintendents from across the state, and they're trying to get some direction to us, give us some guidance on how to hold these larger events as long as we're within certain conditions at the time the event is supposed to take place, much like we had last spring. So, we're trying to be creative. We certainly have many districts around us that successfully held events. We, too, held a very successful graduation ceremony last June. And we also had our students come for a number of activities as safely as we could do. But we have not made firm decisions on any of those. And we're in the same place as many districts right now, waiting for that guidance from the state. So, we hope to have that over the next couple of weeks. We thought it would be this week yet that we would hear. It was confirmed today that we will not be receiving an update tomorrow on special events. So, we'll just wait and share that as soon as we know. Any other questions? Can't see the whole list, so. Ms. Alexander, do you have another question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask real quickly. I know that we do have several new students. Yeah, I was just going to ask real quickly, I know that we do have several new student or students who will be returning to the building possibly for the first time. Or maybe to a building for the first time. How will the parents be expected to know, for example, which doors their child should enter for the high school or the middle school or elementary? Because I imagine there will be decreased entry points for managing traffic flow.
Right, so they're going to continue, our principals know and we had some conversations about this today to make sure that everyone still knows the clear plans for Monday moving forward. Because the numbers in some of our schools have risen quite a bit. We have a number of families that are opting to bring their children back into the building. So that's the level of detail that we ask our principals to share with all of the students and families, which, as you said, which door, what do we do about lunch, lunch boxes and all kinds of good questions about how to handle those things. So I will remind all of our principals to make sure that those details are shared with families again, or know where they're available on their website.
Ms. Sykes?
Um, Mrs. Fitzpatrick, just in reference to your comments about the large events, we still don't know no direction yet, but I just wanted to say to anybody that's watching or listening that wasn't involved in anything like that, like fifth grade graduations or the senior drive-bys or the graduation itself from high school. They were, in my opinion, very successful events and the parents were all who participated, even at the elementary levels and the teachers that stood there and waved while everyone drove by. They were very successful events, just so if anybody's worried at hearing the thought of that. It worked out well in an odd time.
Thank you, yes.
And Ms. Van Heesma?
Yeah, I had a question that actually came up at the ROMS PTA meeting. But for, there was special, there was a week where the ninth graders were in the building alone to orient and then the sixth graders got to do a walkthrough. And so now as we have more, I'm going to call them the new sixth graders and the new ninth graders to the building. What is the plan for something for those students or are we able to do anything for those students?
I think at this point, they're going to, because there are a number of students who have been back, so their friends and peers. And then, as was asked earlier, to make sure they kind of know the rules for entering. Once they're there, they'll be mixing with their peers who have been in the building. So there'll be more guides for them as opposed to all sixth graders would have no experience being in at ROMS, for example. So I know the students will rely on each other and our upper grade, seventh and eighth grade students were very instrumental in bringing more of an orientation process to the sixth graders as well. And I know that will continue, that the middle school does quite a bit with that. But I'm not aware of running like a separate time between now and Monday to bring just that window of sixth grade students back alone. They'll be in with the rest of their peers. I can check on that and with the middle school administrators as well, but I don't think there's anything separate planned. Anything else? Okay. So our decision-making and what we've learned about coming back to school sooner than expected, I think is worth repeating. We definitely knew that our district wanted to move to a greater opportunity for in-person instruction across all of our schools. So to do that by March 22nd meant that we needed to verify all of our good practices in place. We needed to survey our parents, ask them to make a selection about what they wanted to do and at what time. And a lot of this came because our legislature decided that in order for Royal Oak Schools to be eligible for approximately $1.8 million in a supplemental funding process, that we needed to have 20 hours of in-person instruction by March 22nd. So while the timeline may have been accelerated and it was much faster maybe than what we had planned. We certainly knew that we had this plan all along. And again, I'll reiterate what's been said tonight, that our staff have rallied, our teachers have been flexible. That's probably an overused word now, they're trying very hard to make it seamless for their students, working behind the scenes. Spending a lot of time making sure that they're teaching and the student learning is in line, as well as our administrators. You can imagine with the shift in schedules, what that does to a master scheduling process in all of our schools. So again, I applaud our staff for working very hard on this new, new level of plan. But as we move deeper into now, how does that work for Royal Oak Schools now that we know we will be in compliance? There is, there will be a process where we have to validate that we are offering 20 hours of in-person instruction for all of our programs by March 22nd, which then makes us eligible. And then from a curricular point of view, looking at how and when do we then tell the state, yep, we were in line to receive these funds and then here's how we plan to use those funds. We know at a very basic level, the legislation states that we will use the funds for the purposes of K eight summer school programs, high school credit recovery programs, before and after school programs offered by either our own district or our ISD. And then some funding will be, within these dollars, there'll be a number in there for using it for benchmark assessments, which we would use locally to assess our students on their progress. We don't know exactly how much money is designated for each one of those programs or if we will have, you know, a chance to vary those amounts as long as we prove that we have an intent to spend the $1.8 million. But Ms. Bell, I'm going to call on you because we had a conversation today about what we think the deadline may be for spending this money. This is not money that needs to be spent like by June 30th this year. We're definitely getting a much longer timeline for that. Can you add to that for us?
Absolutely. So when we looked that up today, our deadline to use these funds is September 30th of 2023. So of course, we won't, this summer, $1.8 million, that's a lot of funds. So this is something that we're going to be able to use during the year as well as summer school. And we have those couple of years to do it in.
I also think it's important to note that this is not money that we'll just spend on students who may have found a gap, who may not have learned quite as much as they could have. And certainly, operating our lives, our schools, our homes during a pandemic has been something that none of us have been used to. But we can spend the money on programs for all of our students. It's not just going to be for students who have either some kind of a learning gap because of all of this or not. This is definitely something that we can use and spend on supplemental programs for all of our students. So we're really looking forward to being creative and offering opportunities for all students in Royal Oak Schools. Are there any questions on the SRR two funding? And the $1.8 million in the supplemental?
I see Ms. Van Heesma?
A couple of questions. One, you know, is we look at everything that has to be done now, just for school. And all the reporting requirements that we have on a regular basis, let alone some of this. I'm assuming there's additional reporting requirements related to all this SRR funding as well. And I'm going to ask a question, I know our staff is pretty tech, I mean, who's responsibility is it for this additional reporting? And then at one point as well, when we had talked about some of these relief funds and these CARES Act funds, there was a risk that if we had to, you know, go remote, we were going to lose the funds. That was a lot of the conversation early on. Is there any risk to, you know, now we've made the plan to return? Is there, are there risks where we may lose funding as well?
So I'll answer the first question in terms of additional reporting. You're right, there are many, many more reports due to the state of Michigan from the public school systems across our state than we have ever had. At some point, we were at a monthly report or at a quarterly reporting. We're now at monthly reporting for positive contacts, number of times that teachers interact and engage with their students. So a positive attendance, as well as those learning plans that are approved by boards of education on a monthly basis. Those are all due. We know that with the new SRR funding that we're going to receive, there'll be another reporting piece, and I will say that's a responsibility of us here at the district offices to do. This is not something that our teachers or our building administrators will be asked to do. It's a district level responsibility for providing all of that new documentation. So I will now thank our cabinet members and all the folks that work at our business office, our curriculum department and technology. Because much of the work to get all of this done takes a team effort and many of them have been instrumental in making that happen so far. What we don't know is exactly what that level of reporting looks like for these new funds. That's still an unknown and we're waiting on guidance from MDE regarding that. I'll also add that the state superintendent, Dr. Rice, did file a letter with the legislature to ask for further clarification. So even our own Department of Education is asking for clarification on how this all works and what we need to do to comply. So as soon as we have those answers from his office and down to all of our schools, we'll share those as well. And then your second question?
Just if there's a risk of losing funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, thought I wrote it down and I didn't. Okay, so what we know is that we need to offer the 20 hours of in-person instruction by March 22nd. We certainly have never been told there's, you won't lose your fund. We've never been told we'll lose funding or it'll be prorated. Certainly if there's a health risk and we have to close. We've complied with the law, which is we've offered 20 hours of in-person instruction starting March 22nd. And that's the threshold that we will, you know, keep our plans and reporting at. But certainly down the road, if we've had to quarantine, the offer would be in place. But following the county health rules, we weren't able to do that maybe in certain classrooms or schools. So we don't see a proration or have not heard that there'd be any type of penalty to follow the health rules and in fact, we'll follow the health rules. So I want that to be clear.
Have you also, we were on a county call yesterday and it kind of came up where there may be another round of this funding. I don't know if that's, you know, still in discussion. Where it's going to be similar to this with the 9010 where the state's going to be able to distribute it, the 10% on their own and within their parameters. Have you heard a lot of, or any conversation regards to that?
Yes, I did. So on the call with the governor today and another meeting I had earlier today, there is a discussion. The state still, even after all of this funding that will go out in a supplemental, they still have 10% held aside for other things as they come up. So we have not heard any more about what will happen with that last bit of the 10% they're holding on to. But I know they have several plans in place. Think about all of the other programs that are off at your schools. You know, in terms of preschool or GSRP, the Head Start programs that they might supplement, et cetera. So I haven't heard a great level of detail on that, but you are right, there's still a 10% that they have not allocated and we have no information about. We also know that more money was approved from the president and his administration regarding the American Rescue Plan. That will be another level of funding from the federal government to the states for schools. And that's just, that's very, very new to us. We don't have any parameters about how that will be spent either. But the good news through all of this is that our, both our local, our state and our federal government are thinking of schools. They are trying to help us mitigate all of this and for that, we're grateful. But there's just a lot of rules and a lot of reporting, as you asked earlier, to do in order to access those funds.
I did have one more follow-up question.
Please.
Just in terms of the, we're talking about the summer programs and the credit recovery. And do we anticipate any challenges in staffing those programs? I think, you know, people are so burned out from this year and last year. And it's great to be able to have funding to pay for that. But do we anticipate any potential challenges in just staffing that? Because my guess is we're going to be fighting for people to do that as well, so.
You know, and I think that's always a reality, but we have a number of staff members, I think, that now that they have the vaccine and we will have been back in school for several weeks before summer. They still would have a desire to help students in our district and we would, you know, of course, through the scales that we have, be paying them for their participation. Our own Oakland Schools group has a couple of opportunities for staff that any of the local district staff can take advantage of to participate. And then there are others who've said, you know what, the school year has been enough. I'm going to take the summer off and we certainly understand that and would want that for our staff to recharge. I'm confident, though, that with the programs we're going to offer, we will be able to find staff who are willing to continue to work throughout the summer on these specialized programs. And Ms. Olson and the team are working very hard to get those finalized, to present them to the community and then also to secure the staffing for those. Okay, our last slide, I think. So our parents did participate in selection surveys, you know, what choice do you want to make for your child right now? And I, as I've said earlier, our in-person instruction has increased at all of the levels and participation in the in-person instruction has also gone up. More parents want to send their children back to school to take advantage of that in-person instruction than we have had previously. So if the parents still have questions, they should contact the school administrators with anything remaining. Certainly at this point, if there's a special situation that a family, you know, is wondering about or not quite understanding. I know our administrators, all of them, our assistant principals and our principals have taken many, many calls and had conversations with families to work through their situation and answer all of their questions as much as possible. So our school readiness is based on numbers of students returning. So we didn't know until now how many tables we would need or how many dash shields we may want to put in place. And we were able to rally around that. Our principals need as much lead time as possible from families to make a selection and secure it so we can be best ready to receive those students on Monday. And then again, in the fourth quarter. So again, we'll be as flexible as possible to help families when they're making their selections. But in the case of the middle school, when you think about needing to reorganize the whole school into yet a new schedule for the fourth quarter, that last set of three classes for the fourth quarter. The more time that we give our administrators to get that schedule set, the better. If we have more students returning in person, that's fewer teachers that we need in remote only sections. And so again, we're talking about recreating a master schedule for over 1,100 students and probably close to 100 staff members who support our children there. So the more lead time we have for that, the better. But I would say if a parent has a concern or has an idea about the next iteration of the plan for their child, they should contact the school directly. And I know our administrators have asked me to convey that on their behalf as well.
Ms. Van Heesma?
I actually just thought of it, it was probably more pertinent in another slide. We had talked a bit about the latch key program and what the availability was, and I know that they were still hiring. Do we know where we're at with current capacity of latch key? What we'll be able to offer if there's still open slots and so forth? And are we still hiring as well?
Sure, so I'll, Ms. Ashburn, I know is probably listening on the call today, but we did have a conversation in text, so I'm referring to my notes about it. We've had many families reach out who now, as they're returning to school, might want to take advantage of a latch key program in their schools. In fact, a superintendent today on the call said, I don't know how I can operate a school of several hundred children all day, but it takes me six to eight weeks to get a room certified to have children stay after school and in a smaller grouping. So certainly the licensing is very restrictive and is a full process, but we move as quickly as we can. We do have a few families on the waitlist at our schools. And I will applaud Angela Ashburn for, again, working individually with the families and our staffing to make sure that we accommodate as many families as possible in our latch key program. And I would say at this point, if there's a family that still believes that's a need for them to contact her so that they can work out what space is available. But a few of our schools already have a short waitlist and that may change over the next couple of weeks. But for the most part, we are accommodating families who are requesting latch key programs. Any other, Ms. Alexander?
Sorry, I have a couple of questions that I had taken from community members. Would those be appropriate for now? I think like, one of them is latch key related and the other two are probably around quarantine.
Okay.
Okay, the first one was regarding latch key was just whether or not latch key will have seating chart arrangements similar to the schools or the classrooms. And I think this was a question specific to like the contact tracing.
So I'm not sure they're going to have students actually seated in latch key by a seating chart, but they certainly would follow all those other mitigation strategies that we have been following. So wearing of masks, they'll be separated, they'll play outside when possible. I'm sure students will have a snack after school, so they'll be at least six feet apart. Again, outdoors if possible when eating. So all of those same strategies will be held, but students are still going to be allowed to play, much like they will at our recesses, out on our playgrounds or in the gyms. We also know that as many areas as we can within a school will rotate the students in latch key to keep them, you know, in smaller groups if possible. But it won't be a seating chart, I believe, is what you asked.
Yeah, so I guess the question probably, I'm guessing from the parent is trying to understand perhaps how latch key would then trying to understand perhaps how latch key would then perform contact tracing if a kiddo in latch key were to test positive.
And that's a challenge. You're absolutely right. So what we would do is notify those students that were close to that student. But my guess is at that point, with the number of movements that would take place and the chances that there had been sustained interaction between children in those latch key groups, that we would notify everyone in the group should a positive case be found. So that's just another challenge of, you know, you know, having students back in person, but we would certainly keep every family member, every family in that program notified.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's, that seems complicated for sure. A question came up around like if physical education is on a student's schedule for, let's say for fourth quarter at the middle school, will that likely be held outdoors if weather is permitting? Or do we know how the physical ed and health class will likely happen?
So I'll double check on that, but I, I believe, yes, they will be outside as much as possible, you know, to safely conduct the class and be outside. If they need to be indoor, it'll be much like the answer we had for latch key that will try to keep the group separated. They'll stay, you know, as far away as possible. Children are still wearing masks. And certainly at ROMS, the size of the gymnasium and the other spaces that they have to access are quite large. It'll be easier. It's not always keep middle schoolers apart, but we'll do the best we can. And I know PE teachers will be, you know, very diligent about doing that.
Okay, great. And the last question, and I think this is more relevant now than it has been in past meetings. If a student or a staff member has tested positive for COVID, they fully recovered, they are now eligible to be, you know, back in the buildings. And then they are identified within that next 90 days, they're identified as a close contact. Will they need to quarantine even though the likelihood that they would, you know, become reinfected is low? And then I guess same line of thinking is around those teachers, staff and 16 and older kiddos who have been fully vaccinated. Has the health department given us much direction around like what quarantining looks like for those individuals now?
They have. Mr. Wilensky, we had conversations about those that have been vaccinated and then those that may have had COVID in the past and then their new exposure. So if you could add to that.
Sure. Somebody who's had COVID, the COVID virus has the antibodies, so they would not, for, I believe it's three months. I'd confirm that with our nurse. Most likely not be required to quarantine. I know that those with the vaccine, if they're two weeks out from their second shot, they do not have to quarantine for a direct contact. And that's only, they're only committing to three months right now. And I think that's just because that's what we know, that that's where the science is right now. But it's good for three months. That'll get us to June and hopefully come June, the CDC will say it's good for six months, but they don't have to quarantine, fortunately, because I was very concerned that we were gonna need a lot more substitute teachers than we have available. So.
Sure, that does definitely improve things. Thank you.
Ms. Van Heesma?
I had asked this question last week and I guess I wanted to follow up. The, the start times and end times for middle high school and the logistical challenges where we, you know, we really don't want students congregating. You know, because outside the building, there's always that opportunity, they may not have masks on and so forth. Have we worked out some, what is the plan for the logistics of that? Because the time, the drop off times and the pickup times are so similar. And I know that they can pick up lunches, but reality is if a student's not picking up lunches, the, both times are very close.
They are so close. And one of the things that we had asked our administrators to do is to convey their procedures with their families and students directly. So I don't know the exact parameters for those, Ms. Van Heesma, but I know we, that was brought to their attention. We do know the schedules are pretty close in terms of start times. The high school did make a change from last week's presentation. And that was given out to all families. There was a slight change in their start times and I believe some of the times in between each period, but we know it's close. I will reiterate that again to make sure our administrators are conveying to their families when they can drop off and where, to try to make it as easy as possible on families who have students in both schools.
Ms. Alexander, do you have another question?
Oh, I apologize. I just forgot to lower my hand.
Mrs. Anderson, can I do a follow-up too? Sorry.
Oh, certainly.
So I, I think I brought this up again, and I just want to have the conversation again, just because it's, you know, a couple of days away. Just the whole traveling thing, I think we talked about it. There's really nothing that we can do. You know, we talked about spring break coming and people dying to go somewhere, the challenges of traveling. Really from our perspective, you know, the Clear2Go app speaks to international travel, but it doesn't speak to any other types of travel. Just further clarification on that, if you could, please.
Sure. So our Clear2Go app does ask about international travel. And actually, families who may travel internationally or staff, we are putting some direction out. We will be following the guidelines to ask them to quarantine for the seven days upon return. And we're going to be talking more about that to make sure families know that's what will be required of them to come back in. Mr. Wilensky will work with all of our staff to make sure that those notifications are out to all families. But in terms of travel within the United States, that is allowed now. We could certainly have families go 10 miles from their home and engage in behavior that might be putting them at risk with large groups that may gather. Or we could have families that safely travel from state to state, home to home, and never change the core dynamics of the family they travel with. So it's, it's very situational and we, we cannot say it often enough. We need to have our families use their best judgment when they travel. Same with our staff, actually for all of us. As we travel, there's a safe way to do it. And there certainly are mitigation strategies that we should be using. And then for the greater good, when you return, knowing that you're coming back to many, many people who are also relying upon, you know, everyone's relying on each other to follow the rules and answer the questionnaire safely. If you have symptoms, please do not come to school. It may not even be COVID. It could be something you suspect, but we're better safe than sorry if we follow the screener and keep ourselves home, especially if we're ill. And so I, I think it's just a plea to all of our staff and our families to do the right thing when they travel. And for right now, the only stipulation that we are putting in place is following that quarantine upon return from an international trip. Do we, Mr. Wilensky, do we have a timeline on when that notification would go to our staff and families?
To staff tomorrow, yes. And then we'll follow up with families as well. It's not, traveling internationally will not be convenient. People will have to test before they go. They'll have to test before they return to the United States. And they're going to be required to quarantine for seven days. So I don't know how many people will, but there will be a quarantine requirement upon their return.
Ms. Alexander?
I'm just wondering if there was consideration or thought given to the pros or cons to doing a virtual week following spring break. Some local districts are, some aren't. You know, what are the pros and cons that the district considered around doing that?
So certainly the likelihood that families will travel over break is higher than at other times, but I believe I said it on the call last week as well. We have families or staff that travel on weekends. They, they do, you know, family activities or participating in things out of state and coming back and they're back on Monday, you know, to join their class. So we again have to just rely on that screening, making good choices while we are out. I do know of some districts that have chosen to take that week as a break, but as we pointed out, you could come back and be symptom-free for nine days. And on the 10th day, you're sick and that would be the day you were coming already back to school. So we have to rely on our screener and, you know, being diligent about watching for symptoms in our own families. Certainly if families know that if they travel and the people that they traveled with or they went to see, they find out about it, that they're now close contacts, we would hope, again, err on the side of caution and keep your family members home. We have rules and protocols in place. But we hope that our families will use their best judgments as well upon return. But for us, knowing all of the safety measures that we've put in place, requiring masks, our shields and our cleaning protocols, we're hopeful that our families can travel safely and come back to school safely.
Ms. Van Heesma?
I know there's a couple of districts that do have some pretty high numbers of cases, like Oxford and in others where the numbers are, you know, 200 students and such. What, what have we learned from them as, as to what was the, the cause for some of that, those high numbers? If we, if we know, I'm assuming that's shared.
So I'll be generic in my answer because it's not really my place to talk about other schools or districts, but I will say that in some cases, it was due to student contact through athletics or other social activities. And in other cases, I don't know if they were able to point to exactly how their cases rose so quickly. But it did, and it was enough for that school to say, we need a break and we're going to pause our instruction and shift to a remote learning. So we certainly do learn from each other in good and bad times. Superintendents talk all the time. And we do want to learn from each other, but I do think that what the state is telling us is that the cases are not coming from contact in schools in a learning situation. But more often, they're coming from maybe some of the athletic contests. I've known of some teams in different leagues across the tri-county area who their own team had to drop out of tournaments and other things due to their team being exposed. So it, the, the state's word to us is that it's not in a learning environment, but much more in those social activities that come with school or come with participating in neighborhood events.
Are there any more questions? Seeing one. That brings us to item four, public comment. To make a public comment request during the virtual board meeting, please use the raise your hand button to request a speaker public comment. The board president reads your name, you'll be unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak. You state your name and address for the record. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and we appreciate them. However, school board members generally do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comments shall be referred to the superintendent and they're designated for review, study and possible future response. Does anyone wish to address the board? This is A. Winter.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Hi, I'm Lisa Z. Winters. I'm at 21830 Stratford Street in Oak Park, and I'm a parent of a fourth grader at Upton. I know that enrollment is down in the district and I'm sure that part of the reason is because families have been so frustrated with the poor communication from the district leadership around the myriad learning plans with the appearance of erratic reactive and muddled planning for student learning. And with the lack of sustained and sincere engagement with questions and concerns from the family about, families about student and teacher safety. These problems that have driven away and frustrated so many families in the district are the same problems that parents of children of color have been asking the board to address for over four years. I am sure that families leaving and speaking up about the learning plans have played a role in your decision to devote an entire special meeting to go into detail and answer questions about the return to face-to-face learning. I wish the district would take us seriously, the voices and experiences of families in Royal Oak schools who have left the district or are seriously considering leaving because the district has not taken their concerns with, their concerns with and experiences of racial bullying and racially disparate disciplining seriously. Mrs. Fitzpatrick sent a letter out this week saying that these issues are addressed in a quote respectful and supportive manner. Families are not experiencing this respect and support. For over four years now, parents have been telling the district their children are experiencing harm in the schools. The district's own data is telling us that children of color are disproportionately targeted for discipline. And ROMS and Royal Oak High School students have spoken out in numerous settings, including in the Rompa Town Hall this past summer and in a previous board meeting, telling you they do not feel safe at the middle school and the high school. These problems have not magically disappeared during the pandemic. And yet nowhere in the return to learning plan is a discussion of how the district will be proactive in keeping children of color safe from racist bullying and disproportionate disciplining when they return face-to-face. When families do not hear that equity is central to your return to school plan, what we hear is that our children's safety and wellbeing are not important to you. Please stop with the empty words and letters and do the work to show us that our children matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? This is Soderfield. Do you see anyone?
I do not.
Thank you. Then we will close public comment. And we will go to item five, board comments and liaison reports. Are there any comments or liaison reports from my colleagues? This is Alexander.
I apologize if this doesn't maybe fit properly, but I mistakenly forgot to ask one question that someone had sent to me earlier. And that was if someone, and whoever is appropriate to answer this is fine, could expand on whether or not there may be an opportunity for ROMS to have full day instruction, starting with the fourth quarter with the difficulty that many working families are experiencing with a midday dismissal.
So throughout our learning plans, we have always wanted to be as consistent as possible and to give families as much time as possible to, to adjust to any changes or new opportunities that come up with the plans. At this time, Ms. Alexander, we do not have a plan to switch from the current middle school schedule for the fourth quarter to go to, you know, to then full days. Instead, we would continue with the three-hour plan in the morning and students would go home. And then there's a 30-minute block in the afternoon where they reconnect with their classes remotely. And so at this time, we do not have a plan to change that for fourth quarter. But we do know that some families may change their mind by fourth quarter in terms of their in-person or remote instruction, and that will be handled by the middle school to be as flexible as possible with those families.
Thank you. Mrs. Sykes, you had your hand raised earlier.
I did. And maybe Mary Ann can document for me. We had a Royal Oak Youth Assistance Meeting this morning. And I just wanted to report on the organization has given out for emergency needs over $90,000 in the past, in the past year. And we haven't had our annual fundraiser. We're not having the bull on this year, nor last year. But the community donations have been coming in and it's been great. So in case anyone wants to donate more, it's go to the Royal Facebook page. Mary Ann's got a nice link you can click on, but that's a lot of money that we've given out for families in the area for emergency needs. So that's it.
Are there any other comments? I would like to make a comment. On behalf of the school board, I want to extend our deepest appreciation to all the staff in the school district for their extraordinary efforts during what is truly an extraordinary time. As, as we head toward the last stretch of this school year, we feel it's important to acknowledge your dedication to making sure our students feel safe and secure all the while continuing to maintain your focus on their education. Whether you're a food service worker, an educator, a bus driver, a custodian, or you work in the administrative office, we recognize that all of you have done amazing things despite the many challenges and changes that have occurred since March 2020. You have given your best. We want to make sure that you know that we respect and we honor you and your hard work during the past year. Thank you very much. We really appreciate all of you.
Hey, Deb?
Yes.
Tim says that he sent you a text, a message, a comment?
Yes, I will read Mr. Chahorsky's text. Yes, he ended up joining by phone. He sent a text. He says, I want to, this is for Mr. Chahorsky. I want to thank the parents, teachers and administrators for their flexibility and continued willingness to work with the ever-changing plans we're all working with this year. Thank you, Mrs. Haynes. It is hard to, I'm, I'm multitasking here, so thank you very much.
I know you are. It's, that's what we've been doing for so long.
Yes, we have. As we are now at the end of our agenda, if there are no objections, we are adjourned. Thank you.